I'm happy that Amazon's not coming.
You see that deal?
They're not going to New York?
No, she asked it clinically.
She said what?
You know, because they want to give them...
A lot of money.
Yeah.
All right, folks, we're going to reconvene our meeting from this morning. Today, we're going to continue. Today, we're going to continue on with our Rankin County Watershed Storm Base Stormwater Assessment and Management Plan. And the folks from Wagner Engineering are here, Zofie and his associate. So, Zofie, all yours.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for giving us the opportunity. We'll bring to you some really good news. But before I begin, I'd like to say that on behalf of Wagner Engineering, we really appreciate the county providing us with the opportunity to work on a very exciting project. And to be honest with you personally, myself and the project team, we would like to say that we thoroughly enjoyed working on this project. It is innovative. Again, it is only the second of its kind in the state of Mississippi. And I would like to commend the board on being really taking a very proactive approach in dealing with stormwater management, not just at the micro level, but really expanding it to what it needs to be, which is a watershed-based approach. So, the reason we're here today is to, again, present to you the final product and present to you our findings. But before we do that, we want to give you a really quick overview. I know it's Friday afternoon. This is going to go really fairly quickly. So, we're going to provide you first with a quick overview of the project, the scope of work, and what we were able to accomplish. Talk about all the problem areas, all the individual sites that exist in the county where you have issues. And I'll recap, a summary, to pick up from where we left off the last time when we were here and presented to you. And then, we're going to talk about some sustainable funding solutions. I think this is the key. The key is really to have something, a sustainable revenue source that you'll be able to generate long-term sustainability and support to maintain your maintenance, to meet your needs as a county. It really hinges on the establishment of a local sustainable funding source that you could use to leverage against some of the other federal and state funds that are available. And really, we're here primarily to talk about short-term. Make some recommendation to you and present to you with a five-year action plan to address a lot of the priority issues and help put the county on the right path to where you could be active and also proactive in addressing stormwater issues throughout the county. And then, we're going to talk about some of the next steps that we would like to recommend. So, the scope of work that we had, of course, dealt with, we went through three phases with phase one being program, developing program inventory and concept development. And we accomplished that task, and we presented that to you. And I'm going to have Jennifer really come out here and kind of recap all of that and discuss the sites briefly and give you a general overview of what our findings were. And then, the second phase of the project was really the development of the actual program and look at what is a watershed-based approach? What is the best path forward? How do you look at it from a comprehensive standpoint and start addressing a lot of your issues, not just at the site level, at the micro scale, but also at the macro scale? So, we accomplished seven different tasks in there. And where we left off the last time was undoing tasks five, six, and seven, which is really getting into the sustainable or identifying feasible funding sources and strategies and developing a five-year action plan for you. And then, phase three is just to provide the county with ongoing program support services. So, when we said the watershed-based approach, basically, what did we mean by that? This is the proper way, the holistic way, in addressing a lot of your issues, not just at the county scale, but also at the watershed scale. And it's basically a rotating watershed management cycle. And it begins with building public support. You transition from there to data collection and evaluation, and then characterization and quantification. You transition from that into prioritization and targeting. Every single step here has some detailed procedures and detailed approach that needs to be applied. Where we are today, where we stand, Rankin County stands, we are really, we have a plan, and we're ready to implement it. So, we are right there in that black arrow. The idea there is to have a rotating program management cycle. But in order to make that cycle go on and on and on, you really have to have some kind of a leveraging power as a county. And that leveraging power is the creation of a sustainable revenue source for the county. So, that's just an overall recap of the scope. And then, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer right now to give you a really quick overview of what our findings are.
Thank you. Can I? Can I stand over here? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
So, we identified sixty problem sites across the county with your help. And if you turn to the tab in your book that says maps, there are a lot of different maps where you can look at those more closely. The red line represents supervisor districts, and the gray lines represent the watersheds. So, we found sixty sites. Thirty-five were in the city and twenty-five were in the county. Thirty-five of those sixty sites were in the flood zone. Those were spread, your sites were spread throughout seventeen of your forty-two watersheds in the county. We identified five watersheds that were habitually problematic watersheds. These are the watersheds that had the most problems that kept reoccurring every year. And then, we identified twenty priority sites based upon different characterizations. And as you can see here, the red dots, this is also, you can see this in your maps pulled out as well. The red dots represent your high priority sites. And from the pie chart, you can see that each supervisor district had a different number of high priority sites. It's really important to note that twelve out of the twenty high priority sites were located in the flood zone. I'm going to go into that a little bit more. We did a floodplain encroachment analysis to look at how much of your floodplain has been encroached with development and how much of it hasn't been encroached. So, we could kind of look and try to identify specific things that you guys could do to try to help prevent problems in the future. So, there were thirty-five sites out of your sixty sites total that were in the floodplain. As you can see, eighty-two percent of Rankin County is not in the floodplain, but twenty-two percent of your entire county is located in the flood zone or in the floodplain. Out of that, you've got about three thousand acres that has already been developed based upon some data that we have about impervious area. That accounts for about three percent of your flood zone. But it's really important to note that that three percent corresponds to thirty-five problem sites that you guys identified. So, as you can see, the more you develop your flood zone, the more problem sites that you have. And I'm sure that it's not a surprise, but realigning flood zone management and floodplain management is really important when you're talking about flooding in problem areas. Another thirty-six percent of your flood zone is zoned for development. That means that it hasn't been developed currently, but you guys, or zoning, is allowing it to eventually be developed as we speak. And then, sixty-one percent of your flood zone is undevelopable currently. That means that it is not zoned for development. So, it'll be zoned for things like farming or parks recreation, things like that. Also, just an important note, you guys saw a thirty-three percent population increase between 2010 and 2016, which is pretty big, which leads to some of your developable area that being turned into developed area. So, we looked at all of your twenty sites, and we talked to you guys. And we understand identifying and implementing projects on twenty sites in five years is really difficult. And so, we looked at the sites, the short-term priority sites, and we said, okay, well, what is feasible? What could we actually achieve? And so, we looked at ongoing projects. There are four of them. Gunner Road, Mill Creek, Andrew Chapel Road, Oak Ridge Subdivision. So, those are projects that you already have going on currently. We identified six new short-term projects that we think that you guys need to put on the list. We looked at which projects in the supervisor districts are the most important. And then, we also are recommending modeling for Upper and Lower Richland Creek as there's a problem. A lot of the sites in this area, there are a lot of sites in the Richland Creek area. And we think that if we install a solution upstream, it can take care of a lot of those problems downstream with one solution as opposed to addressing each problem site individually, which is why we want to look at modeling it. And then, we identified five habitually problematic watersheds. As you can see, those are outlined in different colors. And that's also a fold-out in your maps section of your report as well. And if you guys have any questions on any of these projects, that may let me know. So, what we did was we looked at how much this program was going to cost. After we went and looked at the individual sites, we recommended a solution.
That's ninety-seven thousand. Ninety-seven thousand five hundred, isn't it?
You've heard something close to that before.
We looked at the sites, and we looked at the rest of the solutions. We calculated opinions of probable costs for how much those would cost for each site. And then, we looked at what framework you guys need to place in the county in order to actually make this a reality, in order to establish some districts or in order to look at sustainable funding mechanisms. And so, the resource needs that we anticipate right now is just a little bit shy of a hundred million dollars, which I don't necessarily think is quite a shock to you guys. We actually divided that into two separate components that Zofie's going to talk about a little bit later on. But one is program establishment, and the other one is project implementation. Program establishment needs to take place before you can implement your projects. As we all know, you guys don't have, nobody has, a hundred million dollars in order to just be like, yeah, I just want to do some projects tomorrow thing. And so, establishing your program and establishing a framework for how you can actually create management plans for individual watersheds in order to go after federal funding is really important. And so, we estimate in the first two years of your program establishment, it's going to be close to a million dollars, not a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Not each year, but over the first two years. And then, about eight hundred thousand dollars over the next three years in the first five years of your plan, which comes out to a little under two million dollars. And then, the rest of that, the rest of that sum goes directly towards project implementation. As you can see, that's a large, that's a large number. So, one of the things that Zofie talked about is the fact that we were looking at different funding mechanisms. And we understand that we don't live in a climate where the federal government can pay for a hundred percent of it, but we also don't live in a climate where the county can pay a hundred percent of it either. So, it's a share that needs to happen. So, we looked at different resources that we could potentially tap for different projects. Of course, not each project is going to check all the boxes to be able to apply for every single one of these funding sources. But we do feel as if you guys have projects that need to occur that can meet some of the qualifications in these state and federal funding sources. And then, we also looked at local assessments in a way that we could establish or that you guys could establish a sustainable local funding resource. Because as you know, a lot of times, you can apply for federal funding, but there's still, there's a local match. And you guys will need to be able to meet that local match in order to get the federal funding, which is really important. So, for the local resource strategies, we actually reviewed six different assessment methodologies that are pretty common across the U.S. And we felt as if the impervious area assessment methodology, or what we call the ERU, the Equivalent Runoff Unit Methodology, fits the best for Rankin County. Rankin County is a mix of both rural and developed area. And because of that, we felt like it would be very difficult to establish one method where you just say, okay, well, just based upon how much land you own, that's how much you have to pay. And so, what Equivalent Runoff Unit does is it looks at how much impervious area you have on the land that you own, and you are assessed a fee based off of that impervious area. And the reason we do that is because on the side, you can see impervious areas are things like buildings and pavement. And it allows water to run off of them, and it runs more quickly to the stream, and it can increase flooding in areas. Whereas, if you have a pervious area like a field or forest, rain falls down, and then it soaks into the ground until it's saturated, and then it runs off. And so, impervious area is directly related to how much stormwater you have. So, we felt like impervious area was the most fair assessment methodology for Rankin County just because of how vast your land users are. So, now, I'm going to turn it over to Zofie. I do want to say, if you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask. I know that we went through this really quickly. It's very, very detailed in the report. Craig has a printed hard copy of the report, but he also has a jump drive that has electronic copy as well. And we're happy to get anything to you guys that you would like.
I have a question. You said that a good bit of our percentage, like thirty percent of our county, is in the floodplain?
Twenty-two percent.
Twenty-two percent. So, I thought that we did not allow development in the floodplain.
You don't allow development in the floodway?
Right, okay.
The floodway is basically the river.
It's higher, oh, okay.
Yeah, and if you would like to look, there's actually a map in here. This one right here, in the very last map.
Yep.
It shows your floodplain and then where all your sites are located. And you can look at it and tell there's a large part of the county that is actually in the floodplain.
In the flood zone?
In the flood zone, yes.
Okay.
You have almost no development in the floodway.
Right, okay, all right. So, the only way to have development floodway is if you have an engineer who can say that you're not going to have any more water leak in your site than what already comes, basically, something like that?
Yeah, all mitigated.
Right.
Could be a regional detention opportunity or retrofit that you would incorporate into the landscape itself.
Basically, the only time that we allow development in the floodway is when you are looking at Pierce or Bridge or something similar to that.
All right, okay, all right.
I picked up one slide or two.
Sure.
Where it had the rung right there, impervious. And I know we're looking at assessing a larger amount on the impervious versus the pervious, but I'm just thinking of Bob's area and some of mine, chicken houses. They have a tremendous amount of roof on them, small area. But the areas that they're in basically have no flooding problems. How are we going to separate them? We can't make those people that have no, they're not having any flooding problems, and they're not causing any, because they're usually in the terrain that drains well and anyhow. Is that something we would have to work out, or is that something y'all are going to work with us on? Because you should poke for people down, taxing them on the amount of roofs they've got on a twenty-acre block.
Right, right. Well, you know, first of all, a lot of these things are applied in so many different places all over the United States nowadays. And everybody's literally struggling, especially in maintaining their infrastructure when it comes to stormwaters. The most neglected asset that a community has is the urban stormwater drainage system that they have. So, to answer your question, they're...
You said urban, no, and this is...
Urban, based on a watershed scale. So, most of the times, people take two different approaches. One approach would be is to delineate an area based on an urban political boundary, which is not the recommended method. Because everybody, the reason we're saying adopt a watershed-based approach is because everybody lives downstream. You know, and the best way, what we're finding out, is to make it equitable to everybody is to base whatever service fees that you're going to impose or implement based on impervious surface. That means you're kind of leveling the field for everybody regardless of where their location is. Because every single watershed has its own unique ecosystem, its own dynamics, socioeconomic, everything. So, everything that you're doing in that particular watershed is going to impact something else. So, the idea behind it is that, okay, we want to abandon, we want to be more innovative and proactive in dealing with stormwater in a way where we're not just relying on old engineering methods, which now, really, the terminology is that this is, let's hard-engineer this through some fancy conveyance and move our problems downstream. And that's not really the proper approach, because it catches up with you over time, you know? So, as far as whether you want, there's different ways you could implement this Equivalent Runoff Unit method. You could take it a step further. I mean, the report in there, that three-ring binder sitting in front of Craig right there, has a description and a detailed analysis of all the six different assessment methods. So, if you want to learn about other options, more suitable options, it could be a percent-based. Instead of saying, I'm going to assess impervious surface, and that's it. You could say, I want to take a percent. You may have a thousand acres and one house on it, and it's a pasture, right? So, if you take a percent, your assessment is going to be really, really low there, right? So, there's different mechanisms that you could apply and play with, but it's really time-consuming. You've got to do a lot of, you know, number crunching and analysis. You have to conduct what's called a feasibility analysis to figure out what's the most cost-effective method to establish a service fee. Whether you want to do it as a county-wide scale or whether you want to take a more targeted approach and apply it to those five watersheds that we're recommending, or maybe two of them, or maybe one of them. That would be a decision up to you all to decide on, you know, what to do. But the nice thing about this is that we're telling you there are some priority watersheds. And the most logical approach to those, for that long-term is to really to establish watershed plans for every single one of those watersheds. And that watershed plan will detail in there how you're going to address runoff, not just from urban, but from every single land use category. In other words, if you want to go after NRCS funds, you stand a better chance of getting those funds if you're addressing runoff from ag land, right? By going in there, because that's their, the rigest interest. If you want to go with the Corps of Engineers, you want to improve resiliency and flooding and those types of things, FEMA money, those types of things. So, you have to design a watershed plan that would position the county in a way to where you would actually apply for the proper funds from all the different land use activities that are out there. And all of that will be part of your watershed plan. That's a long way to kind of answer a question, but...
The farmers would see it as another unfunded mandate. You're going to pay, and we'll try to get NRCS to help you.
Me.
Okay, go ahead. I don't know where you're getting the smiles.
So, I mean, where do we go from here? I mean, Jennifer presented to you where we are in one of the best scenarios as far as what the potential local sustainable funding source that we recommend for the county. So, what's our recommendation? Where do we go from here? I mean, that's really the big question. And what we're talking about here is really, we're recommending for the county to adopt the recommended two-phased approach that we talked about, which is to adopt a five-year action plan. We call it an action plan is because we think it's very, very important to at least get the ball rolling on establishing a watershed-based stormwater management program that covers the entire county. And the way to do that, your situation is unique, is different than some of the other counties. Some of the other counties, like, you know, there's another approach going on in Jackson County. So, this particular project is only the second of its kind. The only difference is that Jackson County, they have some resources, they have some funds that could specifically address their stormwater needs, where Rankin County doesn't. So, the first step, in my opinion, is to allocate at least two years to help establish a watershed-based stormwater management program. And then, allocate the next three years to really start doing the initial implementation. So, what are we talking about? I mean, it's all the recommendation. Number one, and Jennifer alluded to this, is to realign your ordinances, policies with the watershed base. And ISWIM means Integrated Stormwater Management System. And that's really, if you want to be progressive and really be very, very proactive, we're recommending this for every single municipality, county, is you have to have an integrated stormwater management program. And what does that mean? That means a program that's really aligned with the principles that promote green infrastructure and low-impact development. And we can really talk about those two things, you know, in depth, and, you know, it's a very, to me, it's a very interesting topic. And then, number two is really to conduct an in-depth analysis on the impervious service assessment. This is like a feasibility analysis to figure out the most efficient option for the county. And that's kind of in line with your question there, Steve, as far as, you know, what would be the best scenario for the county. And then, establish a local sustainable stormwater infrastructure funding strength. So, whether that's going to be county-wide because county-wide or more targeted approach, or it could be one governing entity that would have a blanket application for the entire county, or it could be one governing entity that would apply it at a targeted approach. So, we don't know what would be the best, most efficient approach from a legal standpoint, from a funding standpoint. All of that stuff needs to be kind of worked out. And four, we would recommend to develop watershed-based plans. And to me, that's really the key. I think this is something I tried to sell the county on maybe fifteen years ago, and we made some progress on it. I think what's really, the closest to watershed, to watershed plans that exist in Rankin County that I'm aware of is one for Richland Creek, and there's one for Mill Creek. And the ones for Richland Creek, even though it dates back to back in the eighties or so, that's how old it is. And actually, we went and dug up some of that information at the local NRCS office. That plan is still used to this day to justify the spending of two emergency watershed protection projects on two dams in Rankin County. So, a watershed plan that that's old was instrumental, in my opinion, to get the funds to address two high-hazard dams, upgrading two dams to meet the criteria of a high-hazard dam in the county. So, that's how important it is to really start the process to develop specific and detailed watershed plans. And then, number five, we recommend to begin the process of applying for, put in applications. Put in applications, not just with just one entity, but multiple entities out there. See, what is it that's, that's the language that the federal agencies really understand. They want to see, what is your watershed plan? Give us some details in there. And then, number six is to continue to implement, implementation of the four ongoing priority projects. Okay? And then, that really gets us to a point where we develop the program. So, we're saying, the first two years, let's get to all of those different activities, and then, we transition there to initial program implementation for the next three years. And that's by targeting leveraged fund for, to implement those watershed-based plans, because we would hope after two years, you would have four to five watershed plans. So, let's target all the resources to those watersheds. In other words, if you want to implement, let's say, for example, a targeted approach with your service fees, well, that watershed will have a more detailed dollar figure. This is how much revenue I need for this particular watershed or that watershed. So, that dictates how much service fees you need to target that watershed or be able to generate for that particular watershed. And then, number two, we would recommend that to update the Rankin County Watershed Based Stormwater Assessment Management Plan every four years. This is a cyclical process, you know? In other words, you would have to apply it, you go through all of those steps. The first time you do it, it's going to be really, really slow. But the second cycle, you don't have to go in the minute detail through every one of them. The cost is going to get to be less, because the data gathering, the assessment, the prioritization, all of that has already been set up. So, to move something from, say, you get a new problem site. Well, why should that problem site be a priority? Well, let's run it through the cycle, let's prioritize it, let's see whether it meets the criteria to be a high priority or not. We wanted to kind of simplify it for everyone, and this is in your packet right here. To me, I like to see a snapshot of everything. To me, I like to see a snapshot of everything. If this is my highest priorities for the next five years, project wise, from a development standpoint, from not. This entire, this is basically a five year action plan. It lists in there the program establishment components that I've discussed with you. And it starts out with the creation of a stormwater management district, and what the cost is. And then to evaluate and propose new and revised ordinances and zoning policies, and what that's going to cost. And then the transitions in there into program support, uh, how to generate sustainable local revenue. And then the creation of those five watershed plans that we discussed, and what the dollar figure is on it. So if you follow this column by column, you look at the first year and it's divided into quarters. And it's basically, it organizes everything and you could literally look at your projects and figure out what phase they're in for the entire five years. So what are the next steps? These are recommendations, what are the immediate next steps? And to me, I would, we highly recommend, uh, to adopt the recommended five year watershed based priority action plan. This five year action plan that we put together and then procure the professional program support services to implement the plan itself. We hope we kind of given you a really good overview, and, uh, we didn't wanna really take too much of your time, but. Again, it's been really an exciting project and, uh, I think in my, in our pe- professional opinion, we think this is gonna put the county. Uh, position the county much, much better. And realign, realigning those policies and then figuring out a sustainable revenue source and then developing those critical watershed plans. These are the three main, major components to kinda get the county to be positioned and, and put it in a, uh, put it forward. And increase its chances of securing more resources.
Am I correct in that you said that it would be basically two years before we would be able to be in this and, uh, go and seek funding?
No, you could start seeking funds at any time, but, but by the time, after two years, you would have a more efficient approach. And you increase your chances of having somebody be more responsive to your needs, is what we're saying.
Well, that's kinda, I mean, I don't wanna go seek funding for you not gonna get it, you know?
Right, right.
Um, we also estimate that it's gonna take about a year to create a watershed plan. Um, and we tried to prioritize the watersheds for their watershed, uh, plan creation, and so Mill Creek is on the top. Um, followed by Richland Creek. Um, but basically, what we feel is, when you finish the watershed plan for one watershed. That's when you can really go start seeking funding for that particular watershed, which is why if you look down. The pointer, the clicker won't work, but the pointer will, so that's making sense. But that's why if you look down here, these stair steps, these are four individual watershed plans. Um, so we feel, we feel as if when this one is done at this point in about year two. Um, that you should be able to go and, and seek funding for that. Correct. I mean, like, like Sophie said, there are some of these that you might be able to go and seek funding for immediately, um, but.
The likelihood of being more successful would be waiting until we complete the plan.
Right.
Um, you already said, and I know there's a Richland Creek watershed, and there's also a Richland Creek board to go along with that.
Right.
So are you saying if, if we set up, uh, individual watersheds, would we also have to have individual boards for each watershed?
That's one option, but I don't think it would be the most efficient one, in my opinion. Um, the, the approach that I would suggest to pursue, for the county to pursue, is to see if you would, you could establish a one governing board. That oversees certain watershed areas.
Rankin County Stormwater Management District. Composed of individual watersheds over which that particular governing entity has jurisdiction. The issue of how would Richland Creek, the existing watershed, which we understand to be a stormwater management district. Subject to further refinement of that opinion. Uh, if in fact it was created as a stormwater management district, then one of the questions that really needs to be answered is. How would a, a countywide stormwater management district that would be created under the same statute? How would that relate to an existing district? Okay? So there's some question about that. We, some conversations that would need to take place that I think would be premature. Cause this board has not made any determination at all as to how it would like to organize. The governing authority to ultimately end up implementing this, right? And you would have the option, by the way, under the statute. This board has the option, under the stormwater management district law, to be the governing authority. You have that option as a board supervisor. Now, whether that's advisable or not is a question for another day, but you would have that option available too. Okay, so there's a good bit of work here. This is, these are recommendations to you that provide for a process. But I think question, Steve especially, how would you set up equivalent runoff units and how would those be applied across the county? That's a detail that's really, it's very important, but it's, it's down the road a ways to figure out. Are there other funding options that would make more sense? There's six in the book to look at. And what we may find is that instead of ERUs, we may wanna look at a hybrid between that and another funding mechanism. We may wanna just chettison that and go to a different funding mech- mechanism. I mean, you guys could say, every square foot in the county shall be assessed a stormwater fee of. Point zero, 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 five. You could do that, but the guy that's got ten thousand acres of timber is gonna get pretty hot and bothered. When he's paying exactly the same per square foot rate that the fellow that's got three acres of concrete. That dumps directly into Mill Creek. So those are all questions that are out there to be determined. I don't know if we can say today that, I mean, I like your example, but it's, it's, it's one of those problematic examples where. Um, you're, we're not gonna be sitting here around a table, I don't think we'll ever be able to figure out. Every permutation and who might get, whose ox might get dored out of that deal. We gotta really be smart about it.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking of areas of the county that's never flooded. And those people are gonna sound any part of it.
Right.
And, and, and those are pretty much where these poultry farms are, uh, that have a lot of rooftops. But anyhow, something we'll have to study a long time.
And if you think about it, if, if it's, if at some point you guys say, we're on board, we know we gotta do this. We can't get any R, NRCS money until we got a watershed, they look at us like we got six heads. Where's your watershed? So this approach is going to address what has been, what I think is one, one of the biggest hangups is we don't have a plan. You go to the feds, they go, where's your plan?
Right.
What are you talking about? So thi- this fixes that, yeah, it's gonna take some time. Y'all decide how you want a governing board, a governing authority to take this on, whether it's y'all or an appointed board, whatever. When y'all finally get to that point in, in that decision, at some point, there's gonna have to be a handoff. And what I'm not really clear about, if you establish an entity and you, and you appoint a, a board of governors over that entity. Are they the ones that then make the call on?
Still gonna fall back right here.
Well, it will, it will, exactly. So y'all gotta talk about all this and decide, if it's gonna, if it's gonna be in our lap anyway, we may as well hang on to it and run it. And I can see some synergies in there. A lot of what this district's gonna end up doing is gonna be equip, they're gonna need equipment, they're gonna need personnel. Uh, and so there may be some thought processes, that's why Mike's sitting in here, some thought processes that. Their, the district and the county are gonna end up sharing a lot of personnel and equipment. It may be on the front end till everything gets ramped up. So a lot of stuff to think about.
Right. Yeah, and the other, the other, the other component to this is that what we recommend, the reason we recommend watershed plans again. Is really to address every single land use.
I think that that is important.
Right.
That, I mean, because the guy that's out here row cropping in Sand Hill has no flooding problems right now. But you put subdivisions all the way around him, commercial properties around him, and he's got flooding problems. And he's gonna be coming to us twenty years from now saying, I need help, I'm this deep in water. But he hadn't contributed, if, if we left him out. But he hadn't contributed anything for twenty years. So I do think that we need to include all of it, but maybe look at zoning as far as how we fix our rates. Because you're, I, I mean.
It's a, it's a tiered approach, is what you're referring to.
There are lots of different options for how we do equivalent runoff units, and you can, you can mix it. And so one of the options that we looked at was, um, we looked at actually a, a, a rate based upon zoning.
That's what I, I mean, like your higher density residents, your lower density, your commercial.
But, but then at the same time, with that one, you run into the, the problem where, oh, a parcel could be zoned a certain way, but it's not yet developed for that. If that makes sense. So, so, um, there are, there are a lot of different, there are a lot of different ways that you can do this. I looked at, I've spent hours and hours and hours researching and looking at different examples, and I can tell you for a fact, nobody does it the same way.
And there's so many hybrids in there, it's all really customized to meet the community needs. You could take that approach, it's a tiered approach, and you look at the, really the different density classifications, even in residential, low, medium, and high. And apply, still use impervious service, but apply different rates. So there's different ways to kinda slice this thing. Um, really, a lot of the details are in that three ring binder in there. Highly recommend if you really wanna, I mean, we, it's not gonna be Rankin County only doing this. This is being done in Horn Lake, you know, south of Memphis and stuff. Uh, most communities and counties are eventually gonna have to transition to that. I really think Hancock County might be next, and Jackson County, a lot of the coastal counties. You have to have some kind of a sustainable revenue strain on stormwater. You can't accommodate all this growth and just expect somebody else to come in and hand you the money to maintain your infrastructure. Just like you pay your service fees for trash pickup and so on and so forth. There's gotta be a fee to maintain your infrastructure when it comes to stormwater. People recognizing that all over the country now, you know? It, it might be a hard sale, there's no doubt, it's gonna be a very hard sale.
Well, with the last two years of rain, it's not as hard a sale as it had been before.
Yeah. You raise an excellent point, I'm just curious for, uh, for your opinion on it. Uh, you tell me to shut up, uh, but, um, do you think that the perception out in the extremely rural sections. Where you would find the twenty acre parcel, this guy, two houses on it, two, two chicken houses on it?
There are, there's just almost none of those anymore, there're usually six or more, but go ahead.
All right, well, exactly, so, uh, but is, is it your perception that even, even that owner who can, who can easily see. That there's a lot of impervious service, surface there, is, they're gonna be completely unresponsive to the suggestion that they are at least contributing?
Well, I think they would, I think, no, that, they would agree there, that they have a faster runoff and that the water's running downstream. But it's going downstream and nothing at their place or south of them have flooded since their grandfather was there. I mean, you're talking about, say, shallow, well, crossroads, shallow bucket down there, uh, I mean.
You're saying that there's probably gonna be a disconnect, they all understand.
Because there's very, very, very little flood.
It's not affecting them directly.
Or anybody within ten miles of them.
Okay, I, I get that.
If their neighbor's house is getting water, but then they would see it, but it's, it's, I mean, it just.
It's gone, it's all gone.
Right, right. But, but that's, that's part of the equation there too, is that you don't have to restrict yourself to those twelve digit unit, hydrologic unit codes. You know, for example, you could take one stream segment in there and say, well, that really top, top portion, I can cut that off. You know, so that's, that's why defining the specific area where you wanna draw some revenue or, or charge a service fee. That's really could be based on some kind of a evaluation, you know, it's part of, it's part of it, yeah.
Here's another reality too, that once the district is created and a funding mechanism is in place. That funding mechanism can be evaluated later to determine whether in fact it's meeting the needs of the district. Or is it perceived to be unfair in some way? And, and that, that governing authority, if you guys, if y'all, can then make some, some adjustments.
Right.
One like did that.
And it doesn't have to be structured in a way to where you would, it would give you a hundred percent of, or meet a hundred percent of what you need out there. But at a minimum, it's recommended to at least be about twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent would be a reasonable.
Yeah, but then at that point, you're relying completely on being outside sources, you gotta go get the feds funds to be able to do it. And then there will be some match opportunities that you simply won't be able to reach.
Right, at twenty-five, fifty-fifty.
So there, there's a balance that has to go on there, um, and a lot of this is gonna be volunteered.
Well, most of the stuff that I saw at NRCS or used to be SCS, when you were fifty percent and up to match.
Right, even the emergency watershed protection is about twenty-five percent. So you have to have at least some leveraging power in there at the twenty-five percent minimum level to really have a good chance of that. And so, but, by, by developing watershed plans for those watersheds, you're pretty much emphasizing that you really, really need help in there. You're addressing all of the land uses and their, the need for those land uses. So the farmers out there, they might be even stand a better chance actually of getting some additional enhancement, additional conservation, and additional. So the economics might be even better, um, the assessments that may have to, they, they have to pay. They might recoup most of that by additional funds to go into toward erosion control and those types of things. And then at the same time, looking at the environmental components. The watershed plan is gonna factor in environmental components which will qualify the county. Uh, and position it better to secure some EPA funding at the same time, cause, um.
We, it would be great if there was some NRCS things that went hand in hand with participation. Because in the last two years, we've had more and faster rainfall than I think we've ever had, when you put the two together. And I hear, I mean, on my place, there is erosion that's, I've been there for seventeen years, it went fifteen years, never had anything. And three foot ditches, and all the cotton farms, all the big fields, uh, the same thing I hear, you know, is. Boy, as soon as they got their crops out, they're trying to get things back to where, uh, drainage. And, and what their answer is, is this no runoff, that's coming straight out of the air, look at the rainfall that we've gotten, how can we get help with that?
So, um, something that's important to note is that erosion in a watershed, it usually can indicate that you're gonna have flooding downstream if you have a developed area. Um, because it, it just indicates that your water is running a lot faster than, than your channel and your sediment can keep up with, which is what's causing that. And if your water's running faster, that means it's getting downstream faster. And if you have a developed area downstream and it's coming faster than you see flooding. And so while you don't, while you may not see that they're necessarily tied together, they are, they are kind of tied together.
So all them new subdivision, your district, we gonna really have to go with them, cause it's all upstream, you know? It's all coming downstream from there.
Impact fees, impact, impact fees.
Yeah.
Thank y'all for coming.
Yeah, so, um, so, so while I understand your example of. They understand that they have impervious area and they understand that water is leaving faster, but they're not flooding and it's not really flooding immediately downstream of them. But if they are having erosion problems and if we can.
Well, I'm talking about row croppers, not poultry now. The, the row croppers are the ones that's really seeing the erosion, uh, where it's just flat ground and.
Right, right.
But, but if you can slow the water, if you can slow the water down upstream, then it can help prevent your erosion problems and it can also reduce your flooding downstream.
I think we'd have to slow the water coming out of the air first. I, I think they're having more problems than they are.
What we get mostly anyway is the vast inches in a short period of time.
Yeah.
One thing I think Jennifer's talking about is, um, structures, actual structures, Steve, like a regional detention area. Those can be utilized. Steve, like a regional detention area, those can be utilized in more rural settings in order to address the downstream runoff, the rapidity of it. So, just take, for example, the, the People Hatched Creek situation, 'cause that's going directly into Mill Creek, right? That's, so if we can introduce, and this is gonna be in the rural area, if you can introduce regional detention in the rural areas, then you can eliminate, well, at least alleviate some of the inundation that we see coming right into the reservoir there. So, the solution to Mill Creek may actually be in the rural area.
Right, and the, the other thing is with these watershed plans that we're talking about, they're going to detail in there, in depth, about the different best management practices that are needed for that particular watershed. And when you're dealing with urban and rural environment, the solution to a problem in the urban setting is not usually just there at that one particular location. So, you, you know, you can hard engineer it, or you can have soft engineering. It has to be a combination of different things. You have to rely on the hard engineering components of it and the soft engineering part of it. So, a lot of times, the best approach is a, is a, is a holistic watershed-based approach, where you would go in there and say, okay, I, I have, I have to deal with the existing problems that I have. Well, how do I deal with that? If it's an existing impervious surface that you have, then you have to rely on what's called stormwater retrofits. The watershed plan will go in there and say, okay, in order to alleviate flooding or improve resiliency and long-term sustainability, improve quality of life in this particular area, we have to rely on the following combination of best management practices. Some of it is gonna be soft engineering, some of it is gonna be hard engineering, that is gonna try to solve that problem and also prevent it from happening in the future. So, some of the things we'll be looking at, for example, is, um, look at regional detention opportunities, that would be one combination, but then, how can I reduce the existing impervious surface? That ties into economic development. I mean, you have some communities, for example, right around the Chesapeake Bay area, Maryland, they have watershed plans in there and the specific goal in there, the plan will have, what's my goal, what's my objective, what's my action plan, how much it's gonna cost, when is it gonna happen? That's the type of activities that we're talking about, but some, for example, you know, they wanna retrofit about 5,000 impervious surface in that particular watershed by, by the year 2025 at a cost of $1.2 billion. Yeah, I mean, you, you could take that concept, and literally, yeah, and literally apply it to, you know, what are your problem areas? You know, what is your economically, what are your eyesores in your impervious landscape? Why can't I turn that into an asset? So, retrofitting your urban landscape becomes to where, okay, let's turn the liability into an asset, maybe I could turn it into a stormwater detention basin or something. Right, there, that might solve multiple problems. Then, this is on the, what I call restoration measures. You have to restore your urban landscape and fix your impervious infrastructure, but then, you have to be proactive and look at the preventative side of things, and on the preventative side of things, a lot of communities now are really installing their regional stormwater detention systems in advance of any development coming in. And then, as development comes in, they don't have to treat the stormwater at the source, they tie into the regional, but they're assessed an impact fee. And they don't mind doing that, and actually, you don't have to go that far, Madison's already doing that. You know, if you go right around the Baptist Fitness Complex over there, you see all that structure out there, all of that is, is, provides a lot of detention.
Oh, we're way ahead of them, we're doing that at the jail and the courthouse.
Good.
Yeah.
We have our own little regional detention.
Yeah, yeah. If anybody wants to sign to it, we'll charge them that.
You know, and, and you could do...
We're already implementing the plan, Steve.
We'd love to entertain a lot of, a lot more questions, if there's any.
Do you feel like you'd start your little hand long concept here?
Oh, it's great, we just gotta pay for it.
Pay for it. Well, I think the numbers break down, uh, you, you basically, you know, year one, what, about a, about a million dollars?
I think it's half a million, half a million, first and second year.
Year two is about half a million.
Yeah.
But to get the entire program, the first two years, we're looking at 950,000.
Right.
To get the program established and develop four, actually five watershed plans, but our recommendation is to combine the upper and lower Richland Creek into one, 'cause they kinda tie together pretty good, from a drainage perspective, instead of doing just two separate ones for the upper and the lower, combining those two. So, the full watershed plans and then evaluating and realigning all of your stormwater and zoning policies in there, and make sure that they're kind of aligned with the principles of integrated stormwater management. You gotta have some green infrastructure and low-impact development components incorporated in the plan.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the governing authority, whatever that looks like, my understanding is that, that whatever their assessment methodology ends up being, however it is that the funding mechanism is kicked off, I think there's gonna be a delay in implementing the fee structure and actually having funds received. So, keep that in your mind as well, but, again, unless I'm just off-base here, I think they can establish the fee, but it won't be effective until the next calendar year is when the taxpayer would be expected to pay that.
Yep.
I stand to be corrected on that, but I think I'm right.
And what we're telling you here really is something that a lot of communities are already doing, even large municipalities, for example, like Dallas, I was there a few weeks ago, and they're starting to look at integrated stormwater management program, establishing a specific one for the Dallas Metroplex. So, they're looking at really beefing up their watershed-based approach and looking at sustainable revenue sources, you know? You could imagine the work that they have to go through just to kind of do that. So, it's being done at a very small scale and it's being done at a very, very large scale, and it's effective and it is working. It's a matter of, how do I deal with my problems that I have right now at the site-specific level? Well, you do that through retrofitting your existing stormwater infrastructure. By doing so, you might solve a number of different problems. Well, how do I prevent it? You gotta realign your policies, and you also have to look at more innovative approaches like regional detention retention type of opportunities and jump on those really early. And then, if you have a plan that's gonna position you a whole lot better with all of the different funding sources that are out there.
Anything else, gentlemen?
I don't think so, not today.
Jeff, we appreciate you coming and sharing that with us.
Thank you all, thank you, really appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Anything else before we move to recess?
Yes.
I didn't have to ask, all right, Ms. Austin?
This is something we need to add, this is to execute a statement of work with Hart and InterCivic, this is to fix our ballot style and our split precincts, and Jay, do you have anything, or Craig?
Well, come to find out, Hart contacted me and wanted to set up a meeting, we come to find out, we've never gotten everything worked out with our program since we went to the state and got them to make the change. So, now, we, they're ready to address it, 'cause they wanna wrap us up, they wanna, you know, a positive customer here. The reason why it held up was they wanted to charge $5,000, but I spoke with our rep and he said that even though it's on there, they're gonna work it out in the end, so...
Yeah, so, the purpose for you guys, authorize Bob to execute this agreement is to get Hart actually doing something that's on paper, so they won't be agreement in place, this agreement says that we're agreeing to pay them $5,000 for the work, and if in the process of doing this work, we ask them to do something else beyond the scope of this work, they have hourly fees associated with that, we don't anticipate having to ask them for anything, we really only need them to make our system, talk to the state system, so that we can do our ballots properly, that's...
A lot of it's our split, some is...
That's if they allow us to do that, though, right? The state's gotta allow us.
They have, when the state made some changes for us, it just, we never implemented it, so...
It's a matter of putting in play.
Where we dropped the ball at, or they dropped the ball, the ball got dropped, and so now, we're aware of it and we're ready to get fixed.
Yeah, so, the, the... The requirement is this, Jay has communicated directly with Hart and has been told there will not be a fee. It says there's gonna be a fee, but there won't be a fee. By, authorize Bob to sign it, we're saying that if they charge us that fee, we're gonna pay that fee, but we have been told that we will not see a bill yet, okay? So, we just wanted to make sure everybody was clear, but we do need y'all to authorize us so we can get this wrapped up.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, to put that on the agenda, second by myself, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion approved by Mr. Bishop, second by myself, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries up, Scott, Ms. Austin. Come on.
Nothing. I, I was trying so hard to think of something, but I can't.
It's a sleigh, you got anything? I entertain a motion to recess February 28th, 9:00 a.m. Mr. Morrison, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, see y'all on 28th, about sooner.